Welcome everyone to special call meeting of Swan County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, December eighth, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. If you would please stand now, Commissioner Fleming is going to do our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, it's once more again time that we come to the name, and Father, we come because we need to be lean and independent. We trust God if He makes a way out of nowhere. I know that You're providing, I know that You're human and a deliverer. Father, we pray that we trust in You every day and we be all right. My Father, we come in a business hour that You watch over and protect us with a strength, with a mind to do the right thing, with a good and perfect will. Father, we pray that You bless us, our country, look at our country. We are in the midst of a pandemic. Father, be entering in, be in the middle of the coming out. For God have mercy on us. We pray that You be with us this night. Give us the right mind to do the right thing. Father, we ask these and all blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the seat. Our first item of business is approval and renewal of a resolution declaring local state of emergency COVID-19 dated March seventeen, 2020. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
If you have a motion, please do.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, there won't be any other thing we need to discuss regarding COVID-19. Our next item will be, it's been brought my attention that Commissioner White has some comments he'd like to make. Commissioner White.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight. Appreciate you coming and seeing what your county's up to. I've spent a lot of time looking over the facts, pulling YouTube videos, looking at purchase agreements, looking at land contracts, going over the whole problem we have with Mr. Harris and Mr. Prabat. Y'all need to pay me more money. But I think there's plenty of thought going around here. I'm not saying anything, anybody done anything illegal, don't know that they did, not for me to make that determination. But I can tell you by looking at what I looked at, not only does Mr. Harris have things to answer for, but the board does as well. The board that was overseeing this, which I had no part of, had this information in front of them and nobody asked a question. So with that being said, and after this is, we get a determination on this and we go whatever direction we gotta go, I think we need to, we need to go over some policies and procedures about how things is done and how we can, cannot let this get to where we are today. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to send this to the Ethics Board for review, whatever they do. That's what I would like to see. So that being said, I make a, I make a motion to send this to the Ethics Commission for determination.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. At this time, I think I do need some clarity moving forward since we've discussed this. And that would be, my question would be, we are all receiving an email from Commissioner Land this weekend, and it stated that different places. So what I'm saying is you've made a motion to send it to the Ethics Commission.
Well, that's, that's, that's all the place I know you can send it.
And, and we're in agreement with that. What I'm saying is, what is the board's opinion or thoughts of? In Commissioner Land's email, it states for us to have a discussion next week about Mr. Harris and Mr. Prabat. At this time, and I, I had the office respond to Mr. Land that we would put that on the agenda. My question is, how can we have that discussion if, if everything is, if it's all being read up and sent to the, to the Ethics Commission? Or do we?
Well, I thought, I thought that's what.
I'm saying, I just need to be, I need everyone to be on the same page and be clear that we, we're in agreement that we're not having a discussion about this until we get a review back from the board.
That's, I mean, that's, that's what I see. I mean, you, we're asking an outside agency to clarify, is there wrongdoing here or is there not? And so as far as I'm concerned, until we get an answer back on that, I don't see what else is discussed.
Commissioner Land.
It's my understanding that the Ethics Commission, again, I'm still finding my way here, the Ethics Commission's only gonna, their investigation will only be for ethics. They're not gonna do any criminal investigation, not, you know, not saying that one has been committed, but, but they're strictly on the ethics side. So, you know, I didn't come here prepared to talk about this tonight, but we're here, so let's talk about it. I, I believe that it's a good thing to send it to the Ethics Commission to, to give us some type of guidance as a board and a neutral third party to kind of wade through. There's a, there's a lot of information floating around, a lot of paperwork. We talked about in the last meeting, I believe, maybe either consulting with a third party or, or, or bringing it back to the, to the board on the fifteenth meeting to discuss where do we go or how we get there, because I think everyone will agree, we've never really been here before as commissioners. So, I mean, I don't have any advice tonight on what we do. I mean, I think Commissioner White's motion is a, is a good one, and we searched this out, and the people are asking for answers, and clearly, we all don't have them, or there's a little bit of lack of clarity on what the answers that we've been given are, so.
My only question is, I want to leave here tonight, and I want this whole board to be on the same page of what we're doing. I don't want to go week after week and come back and next week we're hashing out something and, and having disagreements. I want, I want, I mean, we're here, obviously. Commissioner White asked to speak, and he has the right to do so, just as you. But, I mean, I'll, I'll take anybody's input. My input would be that we go, we do just what we just voted on, we get it through the commission, the commission comes back and they're gonna have their thoughts, and when we see those thoughts, and if there's something there that, if there's something there that's worse than what, they're gonna let us know that. And at that time, it will be up to any commissioner's right if they choose to follow a, a path going forward in a different direction. That would, that would be.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fleming?
My question last week was, why did we get to this point? Where do we get to this point? Because it may, it's current course. It looks like, I'm gonna say it like I'm gonna say it, like I've done it. We've seen it, we've been sitting up here two, I remember back in October two thousand and eighteen, the motion that we gave, Chairman, and the county administrator the authority to carry out these options, he did what we asked him to do. I, I'm the one that, I have my preferences, my ethics, look over this, if they find any findings, they probably follow the call, but until then, I can't support it. I got an email from, from Commissioner White, and before he ran for office, he made a decision. Then I had a conversation, lengthy conversation, and somewhere along the line, something changed. I, I, and I don't, I don't understand, but at the end of the day, I want to do the right thing, my heart, my desire to do what's right. To Mr. Harris, he has different things for this county that I'm very proud of. And when you see that kind of action going, you know your heart, it's like, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, and I applaud Commissioner Land for, for bringing this to the board, and that I don't know how we got to this point. And I said that it make us look like we just sat here and allowed things to happen. But everything that I looked over, what I've got, that I got, I saw everything where we did, offered that motion in August. I think August the first, I think, however, I got, I got, I do have it. And I offered that motion, and then the second by Commissioner, and it was a four to one vote. We gave him full authority to go out and seek him to present him. Stuff that I saw and I knew, that's why I stayed the course. I didn't want to get, I didn't have the drive to stay off track, to say that I go to those ethic courses, that's why I go to those, those different fact meetings to learn, to write the call. Something wrong, I have no idea. I have no lawyer expertise, no, nothing of that kind, of that sort. This doesn't change mine or your friendship, or anybody else. I just have to tell it how it is, yeah, like, like, it's the truth. But I'm the one, I'm the one, I am the one gonna have to give him time. That's with Chairman, I have, maybe I have somebody, something to say, but we've got some other commission to talk about.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hale.
Mr. Chairman, just let the public know that what we're discussing as far as what we're, that, that is the land purchase agreement and the contract, land contract, if anybody would like to look at it.
Go ahead, yeah. But yeah, I was gonna say, I agree with Mr. Fleming. I mean, we all want to do the right thing here. I think a lot of stuff, what direction to take, where to go, how to do, I mean, it's been very confusing for me. I think what Mr. White, we voted on is probably the right direction to take. But I think what you're asking is specifically the email that we received.
Correct, because I had to answer his email, and he has to put something on the agenda, and that's discussion of contracts. My question is, I want to clarify before we leave here this evening.
I got you.
The way this board feels about, are we discussing anything else about Mr. Harris and Mr. Prabat before we get the findings back from the Ethics Commission?
I'm with the board, whatever you want.
I would like to have a motion for or against, what I would like to have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion again.
Okay.
I'm gonna stick with my bill. I, I don't see any, I don't see anything. Ethics finds something, then they open the door for.
Or a motion against what?
Or, or a motion against not having any further discussion on Mr. Harris or Mr. Prabat's contracts until, or their future, until we get results back from the Ethics Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I talk, or address Mr. Fleming?
Absolutely.
And again, I agree with you a hundred percent. This, this doesn't affect our, our friendship or our relationship. I haven't, I had absolutely no preconceived intentions or ill will, or, or knew that any of this stuff was going to land in my lap the way that it did. But to answer your question on, on how we got to where we're at, and I, I agree with you, we're, we're not in a good, good place. I got people asking me questions, you know, that I don't have the answers to. And, and I went to Mr. Harris as the new kid on the block, the rookie, the greenhorn, the guy that hasn't even taken his first ethics course, which I'm doing tomorrow online, to ask Mr. Harris privately, hey, what happened here? Like, what, what went on? And he withheld a lot of information from me. As a rookie, it would have really helped me maybe understand what happened, or, or, or what went on, or what the protocol was, or why he went out and got twenty acres in his personal name as a confidential undisclosed principal for the, for the buyer. He didn't tell me any of that stuff, nothing. And, and, and the fact that I asked him if he knew Mr. Adams, and he knew him, but not that well, well, then a little bit of digging, and he lives across the street. So my, my, personally, and I think the public's on the same page with me, I have a trust issue now, because I, I went privately to try to, to try to get my head wrapped around it. I am the rookie, I am the, you know, the, the new kid on the block. I've, you know, so, so that, that generated even more concerns that I was finding out information on my own when I tried to get them, you know, so, so, you know, I'm just trying to explain, I, there's no ill intention here, I just.
I don't, I don't disagree, and I don't mean to cut you off, you know, to say you're welcome to say it. I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, and I understand the folks, the group of folks that have issues and questions that I want you to find answers to, I understand that. But I would like to say this in defense of Mr. Harris and Mr. Prabat, there's a lot of folks that are supportive of him in this county, a lot. And I mean, I think every commissioner here can say we, we have phone calls going both ways. There, I mean, my phone's mailed, but it's, there's a lot of calling that's in support of the things that they've done good. And that's why I ask, just as much as people have called and say, hey, we need to find out answers to what's going on here, and that's, that's our intent, to do that. But I'm just saying, I think as a board, we need to withhold judgment until we have a report back, and then we move, we discuss more, we move forward.
I'm good with that. I'm a little, I'm a little biased, I guess, because of the way I felt like I got treated right out the gate, I'm searching answers, and everybody was slamming the door in my face and calling me, you know, new and, and unborn, and what, I was like, just ask some questions, like, just help me out here. But nobody, so no, I'm good, I mean, I'm good with that, if that's the way the board wants to go. And I'm not here to repeal any orders, but I just want me to treat it the same as the rest of the guys, you know, ask questions, give some answers.
Fleming.
Yes, sir.
I, I appreciate your, your understanding, your level of understanding. You made the approach, and how that did it is, God in sunshine. That's why I say I do, do that, and I do it. And I appreciate you can give me the push, and, and, and just like when the findings come out, I can promise you, there's something that is not clear. I understand, I have support, right now I can't.
Yeah, I have to.
I want you to understand.
And I'm good with that.
And I think this whole board feels the same way, I mean, I feel the same way. I mean, if it comes back and they have no findings, then we move forward. If it comes back and there's an issue, then we address it. I mean, if.
We want to do the right thing.
Absolutely.
I just want to get to the bottom.
Sir?
I just want to get to the bottom.
Absolutely. I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming that we will not have any further discussions about this until we get our findings back. Do I have a second?
Real quick question, do you have a, a motion on this, or just a consensus? I don't know how that.
I mean, I don't mind a consensus, but I want clarity. I mean, that's, that's what I am, so.
I just, I want to know, so that, we, we leave here, you know, just asking.
Exactly.
I don't think it's something we voted on, so I don't know if we voted it off, like, that's the fucking thing.
Well, I, I still need one, a consensus that we're for or against discussions after we get the findings back. I just, I mean.
No, we, I mean, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
So we got a consensus that we're all good with that, we will, we will hold further discussions until we get the findings back, then we'll move forward.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fair enough.
Can I ask one?
Will you withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not discussing this anymore, but I would, from this meeting going forward, would like to have written detailed minutes of these meetings. But what we got now is a complete summary, and if you have to go hunting, it takes a while. But if it was like it is on that YouTube video on that set of minutes, written minutes, I think would make life a lot easier. So I don't know how we do that, but I would like to ask for that from this, from this week forward.
Minutes are just a summary of the meeting, they're not transcripts, and that's not what they're supposed to be. I'm sorry you're unhappy that they're not word for word, but.
Well, I mean, they're not even, they're not even close.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's something we discussed on the development board, and we're gonna have to address it. We're talking about possibly recording, I don't know if that's something that we can use like a tape recorder, but the out video, the out video.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get the video, but I can tell you, I went to hunting and stuff, the minutes in the, in the packets, if you go back and start hunting, is a summary, a real brief summary. So you gotta go back to the videos, well, you gotta sit there and watch the video. If you wasn't in the meeting, or you don't know what happened, you gotta go back and watch, and watch, and watch. And I'm just saying, I think it ought to be written. I don't know, that's where I'm at with it. I mean, I just think it ought, I don't, how hard is it?
Hold on just a second, I need, do you have any further comments about it?
Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir.
John Coke, Independent News Services, one eight oh five two eighty nine, bro. Commissioner, I appreciate what you're, what you're saying, but these people here go to quite a few meetings, and minutes are only general types of observations that are gotten, not necessarily specifics, unless you want to hire a court reporter or somebody to take that, and that is an, an extra expense. But to expect these clerks to do that, and I rely on these clerks and have for almost fifty years as a news reporter, and understand their position, part of that responsibility is for you, if you didn't attend that meeting, to do the hard work we do as reporters.
As is.
Okay. But to, to, for, to, for us to have to spend any more money on, on, on an extra thing is that, is a burden on us, the taxpayers, for something that is there and everybody else for you to get. So I think your request is a little bit extravagant, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
That's fine, I mean, I'm just saying what I want. I mean, if y'all want to agree, that's fine, too. I just think it ought to get a little more detailed, so.
I can probably speak from here, it's a little bit picked up.
Just hold on just a second, Larry. We just need it where it's for the video, where it can hear it from the reports.
Trying to be safe.
I'm all for safety.
Commissioner White, hold on just one second, sir, while we're waiting. I, I don't have a problem with asking the office to research maybe what, what this would cost, or.
Get some details on it. I, I have no idea, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what I think you're doing.
I mean, I agree with him, it is, when you go to search in minutes, there's, there's, we don't, I mean, you, we, we rely, or I've had to rely on, on staff to try to help me find it, there's, we don't really have a software program where you can kind of go in and search for keywords, or search for key dates, and kind of narrow it down.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we do.
There is a software, County Offices actually has it, we have a shared folder that they can access, all the agenda files, all the minutes, all the agreements, everything, it's there, and you can search for it, and there's a program that searches by keyword, there is.
Okay, maybe that's how they're doing it for me, I didn't realize it was there for me to do it myself, but that's a good tool.
But I just didn't want you to think I was not making light of your concern. Yes, sir, name and address for the board.
Tim Williams, one hundred three one nine six one oh four Street, Welborn, Florida.
Welcome, sir.
Great part of Florida, great county. Okay, so the state of Florida, many years ago, what's called Action Minutes, the Florida Association of Counties has policies, procedures, and recommendations for that. What the young lady mentioned is what I was gonna also say, you guys as county commissioners have access to those programs, you can have them installed in whatever electronic devices you have, and do word, keyword searches for that stuff. The last time I had a public meeting in Swan County reported verbatim, it cost me eight hundred dollars for the court report.
Thank you.
Just to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update.
Does that happen?
Wow.
It does, and I, it's fine, if I can find it, I'm good with it. I don't care, I don't want to pay it a hundred dollars. But I would like to make it a little easier to find what I want to find.
Well, at least, appreciate Mr. White giving us that update, and we kind of got that worked out.
But I want, it's no disrespect to you, I, I don't mean that you're not doing your job, and I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it was frustrating for me to hunt that.
At this time, we will, I will look before any public comments, if we have anyone wishing to speak, let's make your way to the podium. Welcome, sir.
Wendell Snowden, thirty-three oh two, one oh fourth Street, Welborn. I came here tonight to speak on the cotton deal and the nice article that the Lake City Reporter put out, and the nice big headlines that they did on top of the page. But I have seven or eight pages that you guys probably would have cut me off halfway through it, but now I'm complimenting all of you on the fact that I don't have to do that. And it looks to me like the five of you are working together, and what Mr. Lynn says about a lot of his constituents, and other people want answers, that's true, all of you have constituents, and, and all of your constituents want answers. I'm one of them, and, and I know that all of you have received phone calls, Mr. Stapleton said his phone melted off, what four of those calls were from me? And that being said, when I would summarize, see, a lot of people want answers, like, there's confusion about you made a motion for a third-party investigation, and then that was great, I thought that was very good. But then, a few days later, you turned it around and wanted permission to go to the state attorney's office and, and bring in other groups, and I don't think that was brought before the board voted on. That I didn't, that part I didn't like. But, but see, tonight, the five of you came up with, with a perfect plan, and, and I agree with you, the Ethics Commission might not look into some aspects of what you want them to look into, but if they come back with an opinion different, showing wrongdoing, then the board can take that opinion and run with it. And, and if you do it that way, you're not gonna get inflight from me or, or anyone else, because they're gonna be agreeing with you. And, and I think that everybody in the room, all constituents in this county, I'm a doer, and I'm a putbacker, and I'm a giddy, I'm gonna take it, most people know that, and why I'm here tonight. So everybody's gonna be on the same page when, when that opinion comes back. And if that, if that opinion comes back to show something, I'm right on in that incident. So thank you guys for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Do I have any, anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time? Mandy, what do you have, sir? Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time. We will have closed comments. Mr. Prabat, do you have anything?
Mr. Wendell, Stephen, thank you.
Mr. Harris, anything? Commissioner White.
Pretty much what I just said, I just, I don't, I don't want the young lady to think that I was telling her she wasn't doing her job. I'd feel bad if she thought that way. I didn't know you could get a program or whatever to do that, and I'm happy with that, I'll be, that's great, I didn't know. But other than that, I'm just glad we all came to a decision, that it's, we're gonna, we'll get to the bottom of it, and I just appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, I, I say the same thing as Commissioner White, he said, I'm glad that we can work together. If we come together and work together, we can get things accomplished. But if we don't do that, I, everybody's opinion, thank God for it, I understand. And if everybody you got, you're my friend. The county attorney, my best friend.
What's that?
The attorney. Now that I'm, I live across the town, attorney, the best friend you got to crack. The attorney's out, the Calhazis, they'll tell you that, explain stuff to you, just how important it is, you there, understand, and that's why I'm glad to be choosing this route, with our ethics, getting involved, ethics, do that, that keep everybody's, and like I said before, you still my friend. And like I said before, you still my friend. May disagree, on some things, but I'm still your friend.
Uh, I mean, I think, I think any, uh, any good relationship, uh, you know, marriage or friendship or, or, or customer, whatever, is based on good communication. And if you got solid communication, you'll have healthy relationships across the board. Um, so I, you know, I appreciate your comments, and, and, you know, I won't log in in the clerk to know that I'm, you know, I wasn't knocking their job either, but I wasn't aware of the, of the program that we had access to or not to search, because the YouTube videos and the, and the minutes can be a, a grueling process to try to discover information if you're doing it by yourself. Um, but, but they've been a lot of help, um, in my research. The one question that I, that I do have for the board is when I was at FAC last, last week, um, you know, news travels fast on what's happening here, and, and several of the senior FAC guys, commissioners across the state, a couple of them actually approached me and asked me, "Hey, are you, you know, the Commissioner Lynn from Lalo?" And I was like, "Oh, great, where's this going?" But anyway, they asked me, they said, "Hey, did you, did you guys put your administrator on lead?" I was like, "What are you, what are you talking about?" And they said, "Well, if you're gonna do an investigation, that's just protocol." And I said, "I, I don't know, I don't know anything about protocol yet, uh, for any matter, but, and that's just a question I was gonna ask you guys. If we're gonna do, I mean, we're saying, we all agreed to send it to the ethics commission, should we put our administrator and, and, and I, and I don't, Mr. Prabat's a subcontractor, I guess, not really an employee, but do we, do we do, do we put him on lead pending investigation?" Uh, again, I'm just asking, I'm not making this suggestion, I'm asking the question because it was posed to me at FAC, you know, at that conference, and I, I don't know the answer. But I, I should've brought it up earlier, but it, I didn't get the opportunity. I don't really know the answer, I'm just asking the question.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't heard of such, and I, you know, I had them just talk about it, and I'd say I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, and I haven't studied it. It's about law, but I never heard of that, Commissioner Lynn. And it might be up to this board, and there you go again. We have to have, we still have to have, have kind of administrator and attorney conduct this, you conduct this. That would be my thing.
Well, I mean, we could do an interim if we, if we did, went there, or out, but we go.
Sir?
I don't know the protocol.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know. Those, I mean, those, one of the guys was from Okatomi County, and another one, I forget where he was from, but they asked me that question, I was like, "I, I don't know."
Jimmy Johnson's the one to reach out to.
You know, I just know anywhere else, you know, if you talk to law enforcement or the same might be here, if you got, they got an officer under investigation. If I have employee under investigation, usually we can put them on lead until we determine good or bad, but, you know, I don't know, I'm just, again, I'm not making this suggestion, I'm just asking questions that would ask me. I don't know the answer.
Mr. Snowden, you'd like to speak.
Did you need my name again?
No, so you're fine.
You know, you guys made a motion, and, and to send it to the ethics commission, and, and you voted on it, 5-0, and the discussion was to have no further discussion on Randy and Jimmy until the opinion came back. And then, not only that, but the chairman took a consensus vote. And, and you know, Mr. Lynn, you don't give it a break, do you? You've gotta keep feeding, you know, you're gonna keep feeding it until you bully somebody and get you away, that's what you're doing. And it's tough about commissioners talking to you in different counties, I don't believe it would ever, so you guys decide it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Snowden.
I didn't make that up, but fair enough.
Just real quick, uh, one thing, you know, Bo Hancock, Wigan Road, One County, who's gonna write the complaint, or the, to the ethics commission? Somebody's gotta write it, and if Mr. Prabat is part of it, he can't do it. So some, who's gonna write it, y'all need to decide that. And I disagree with Mr. Snowden, you do need to discuss that.
I would, uh, I would offer that, Mr. White, Commissioner White, would you be willing to-
Boy, how it-
Tap on that?
I don't know how to do it, but I will.
Yes, sir. I would, uh, I mean, I'm open, I'm just-
Yeah, I don't know with that, and as far as the question you proposed, I, I don't know if we wanna give the chairman, um, direction to define protocol and bring it back to us.
The answer matters not to me, I just, I, I, I forgot that earlier, and I apologize, Mr. Snowden, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse or bully anyone, I'm just merely asking a question, what the answer is. I'm perfectly fine with it either way, just a question.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? Yes, sir. I'm not gonna say a great deal, and I'm not gonna address the, uh, issue, maybe I think that's the proper thing to do, that's just my opinion. But what I would say is that we don't have any pending, uh, purchases of real estate on the horizon. So I don't envision any of those that we don't have on the horizon being challenged or threatened while we're waiting for the ethics committee to give you an opinion on this. Having said that, we have a great deal of work that we're involved in, a lot of work. And I don't have any problem continuing to work and see to it that what we're involved in right now continues so that we can get our utility sunrayed out of the dunes. But at the end of the day, it's your decision. Commissioner W, you should not speak.
I would say, uh, Commissioner White, you, you're the chairman, you contact Jim Johnson at FAC, and, and she'll reach out to you, they'll talk to you, they'll tell you, they'll explain you how it's done. It's done all the time, you know, I never heard of, you know, about the kind of government state that all the attorney have to, you know, to believe in the absence, but they want to know more. This is what FAC does, the Florida Association of Counties, it's their job, and, and this is our job to go and get, gather information, and bring the information back. And you know that information, you know what's going on with that. I think you as the chairman, you were called, and you don't know who you are.
I will, I will do as this board directs me to do, but I would say this at this time. I would ask this board to continue that Mr. Harris and Mr. Prabat work until we get the opinion back from the ethics board. Now, if that opinion comes back and there's wrongdoing, then at that time, I think it's justifiable to put the county administrator on lead. That's just my opinion, you know, we got five opinions here, so I'm just, I'm, everybody wants to know what our opinion is, and I'm-
That would be my opinion, I suppose. Find any five, and then-
Then we proceed with exactly what Commissioner Lynn said.
Fair enough, I'm good, I just asked a question, I don't care about that, I mean, just, I'm good with that.
Well, I mean, you, you have, you-
I'm good.
You're willing, I mean, you need to speak, what your thoughts are. I think every one of us does, I mean, I want everybody to know we're on the hot seat. And I don't have a problem with it. I'm gonna sit up here and do the right thing, and I'm gonna do the best I can, and I'm gonna say things that probably aren't right at times, but I'm gonna work with everyone. I'm gonna be upset with you, I'm gonna be upset with you, I'm gonna be upset with him, before my four years is up, I'm gonna be upset with everybody. We're done with it, so it's, it, it, it's just part of the nature of the business.
Really?
Uh. No, I haven't been upset with you yet, you're bigger than me.
You're gonna tell me? You're gonna tell me? I, I think, Mr. Chairman, what he tried to say, we're, we're all gonna agree and disagree, but then they will work through these things. But I agree with you, I, I, I want this board to work together, I want us to be, uh, you know-
It's give and take, it, it, it's give and take. I mean, you, you gotta come in and state your case, and, and you gotta be, be willing to step back and, and look at the big picture, we all have to be there at times. I mean, there's, there's good times that, more times than not, that things don't go the way I'd like for them to go. And I have to just, you know, I have to realize that I have, that it's, that I'm, I'm used to working for myself. So if I got two people that work for me, I tell them exactly what I want done, how I wanna do it, and if they don't do it, then we got a problem to answer to me. The problem is, there's five of us, and we all have to work. We're all five bosses, and we have to make that work. And, uh, that's, that's what I push every day, I, I truly wanna do that. Now, regardless of what I'm saying and rambling on, but we have to get back to consensus of the board. Is the board okay with waiting till the findings come back? And if there's findings that justify the county attorney and the county administrator to be put on, on lead, we do that at that time. I just, I need a consensus. Sir?
Good. Well, as long as there's no real estate dealings.
No real estate dealings between now and when we get the findings. Absolutely. So the consensus is, we will, once we receive those findings, we will make, we will have discussion at that time.
Okay.
Uh, that was your closing comments, did you have any?
Yeah, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Harris?
Um, I just appreciate all you guys, and we're all, like you said, in the hot seat, this is a difficult time, but we're gonna get through this, guys. We have to know what we're gonna make happen. So I'm gonna do a little lighter subject here. I think some of you guys know, Sunday was my 23rd wedding anniversary.
That's our anniversary. Wow. I wonder how she did.
Yeah. And, and we were able to slip off for a few days, and that was great. So I just wanna mention that. And the other thing is, and I think definitely Commissioner Lynn will agree with this, and, and you gator fans can't, but Florida State has not lost a game in three weeks.
It's kinda sad, though, that they play any with it. I wanna, anything else?
No, sir.
That's it. I wanna end with a little something that, uh, I've, I gotta pick it, my good friend here, Commissioner Fleming. Every, all the time, this happens to me, and I'm sitting here, and everyone's talking, and especially when the board changes and you have new commissioners and new names. And I'll call somebody by the wrong name, and, uh, so Commissioner Fleming, he gets to talk, and, and I love him to death, but he'll forget your name, he'll forget my name, he'll look at you, and he'll say, and it won't come right to him. But the thing that I do, I find it funny when he does that, because when I get my, my packet up in the corner, I put a cross, and I put four commissioners' names on there, and it's laying in front of me. So when I'm looking at it, I can call whose name it is, 'cause I get confused, but I just-
Well, keep on living, your birthday's coming, you'll start to get it.
But, uh, anyway, I, I do appreciate everyone, I appreciate the tough, uh, the tough discussions. I mean, that's, uh, this is where you, this is where you separate leaders from, from, uh, people that just wanna, wanna cause issues. You, you get together and you find out what, what the truth is, and you move forward, and you're, you're a bigger and better person for tomorrow. So, uh, I thank all of you for that, Mr. Lynn, especially you, I, I just, uh,